If I can ask people to please take a seat so we can begin the second portion of the evening, that would be great. So this also has all been determined by random draw. For County Commissioner District One, Denny Hamilton will be the first to answer. It will be in the same format, so Denny will have two minutes to answer, Randy will have two minutes to respond, and then each of you will have one minute to wrap things up. With that, Denny, building the Belfair bypass has been on the list of chamber legislative priorities for several years, yet we are years away from funding construction. What is the county commission's role in advocating for the bypass, and what will you do specifically?
That's a great question. A lot of people have asked that question over time. Can you hear? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, what I said was, is it's a great question. A lot of people have asked it in Belfair and throughout the county. I think that there is an answer, but I'm not sure that I have it. What I do have is a commitment to working with the people in this county to arrive at a solution to the problem and get a bypass completed. The actors at the state level are critical to this process, and we've heard earlier this evening about the role of DOT, and I think that there are legislators and senators who have to be brought into the process as well. And I believe that there is money available if we go after it, if we put together a committed group of people, not only in the Belfair area, but throughout the county, a committed group of people, business and private sector and public sector people, who are committed to getting the thing done. One of the things that I know that has been a hindrance in the past is that the Department of Transportation has used the discord that has existed in the Belfair area about the bypass to, as an excuse, not to go forward. We need to get behind it and get it done.
Thank you. Randy, two minutes?
I've been, I've been working on this for many years. This isn't something that I'm just now picking up, just now learning about. I'm a port commissioner for the Port of Allen, and most people don't understand, but the port, one of their main objectives, aside from economic development, is infrastructure. They have the ability, and it's within their purview. So this is something that we've been looking at and working at for years, not just because they've lived there and dealt with it for years, but I want to remind people of a little bit of history here on it. First of all, it was on the books, it was not a state project until only about eight years ago, before they came on the commission, it was changed. Before Linda and Tim and them, it was changed by the commission that was there before that. They basically zoned it and started a big hullabaloo about it. Shortly afterwards, it became a state issue. But then there was a time here, only a few years ago, where we had another opportunity again. There was like 11, 12 million dollars that the state had set aside for this project, but they were talking about 100, 108. I saw an opportunity arise, as I started contacting the different people that have been involved in this for years, Mr. Overton, the county, and different levels, and started trying to find out if there was a solution, if they partnered with the state, because the state, the port is considered a state entity, and that money can be moved through the state. So I started trying to find a way to use it, and I went to the different entities, asked them what they wanted to get it done, because it'd been a lot of battles. What it ended up coming out to is certain people, one of the certain things, like Charlie Butros at the time, he wanted his 101 connector, and it was check, 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 and we found out what we could do, and then asked Charlie Butros how much it would take to do it. And at the time, he said 24 million. Now, I went to Tim and a few others, and we were looking to do it, we'd pull it back as a, as a port-county conglomerate issue if the money started to move. But it wasn't moving at the time, and then it disappeared. It was none of their faults for not jumping on it, they all thought it stood a chance. Now is an opportunity to pull all these entities, like the port, the county, together, bring it back to be a county issue, and establish it again in the same location or inside the railroad tracks this time for a shorter distance.
Thank you. Denny, one minute?
Yeah, the question was, what does the county commissioner do in this circumstance? And I think that one of the things that I would bring to this situation is a lifetime of bringing communities and ideas together. I think that the county commissioners have a leadership role to play. It is in our county. We have a leadership role to play, but we are not going to, we are not sole actors. We need to bring together a coalition of local leaders, state leaders, and professionals to put together a plan that is fundable, a plan that could be done in collaboration between the state and the county, perhaps state funding with county doing the work. We can do the bypass for a lot less than, than is on the books at the state level.
Thank you.
Again, we had looked into this, and it was established by Charlie Butros a couple of years ago that it could be done at the county level for 24 million. Big difference in pricing when you're looking at. The impacts, if you bring it inside the railroad track compared to outside the railroad tracks, are much less, because of course, it's on a hill and doesn't have the wetlands issues to deal with. So there's a possibility of even bringing it down less. We can all get together and give each other a great big hug, but eventually, somebody's got to get it started to get it done. I've been working on this for a while. I have no problem being the one to put my neck out there on the line to try and get it actually established, started, and done.
Thank you. Randy, I'll have you answer this question first. As you probably know, the port just voted to relocate the fairgrounds. Do you agree with this decision? And if you don't, what would be your solution? If you do agree, where should the new fairgrounds be located?
Eventually, something will have to be done, but it doesn't at the moment, I disagree that at the moment. Although it looks really bad on paper, the truth of the matter is, I've looked, I'm a realtor also, I've looked over all the documents for when they transferred the property, and best use is the determining factor for the FAA. The county itself could actually rezone that area to festival, and then the best use that would be available to it would be to use it as the fairgrounds and stuff. Eventually, though, something would have to be done. Without a doubt, the, the fairgrounds itself is not in the best of shape, and we'd have to work at it. At the moment, to have nothing seems unrealistic. But we can rezone, and the, the property owners don't even have to be okay with that, believe it or not. I'm on the planning commission, I'm the chair of the planning commission. I was surprised when I found that out. It can be rezoned even without their okay, but if that happened, keeping it as a fairgrounds would be a possibility.
Thank you. Denny?
Well, it's a very interesting question. I attended a meeting today, that was a joint meeting of the county commissioners and port commissioners, and the subject of the discussion was the fairgrounds. And one of the things that I think is important to understand is that it is and has been a county responsibility to host this county fair and the fairgrounds historically. What happened shortly ago, a few years back, that the county had no funding to continue to support the fair, and made a choice that left the port in the position of having some kind of responsibility for the, for the fairgrounds. What I saw happening today was what I think is a step in the right direction. We saw the pair, the, the port commissioners and the county commissioners agree to establish a committee that's going to take the work that's already been done to look at the fair, fairgrounds option that is available near where the Department of Public Works is now. There is land available there, there is a plan available there, so this committee is going to take a look at that, and look at the issue of how can we find the money to support a, either a renovation of the existing fairgrounds, if that option is still available, or create a new fairgrounds that gets us started along the road to, to building a forever kind of fairground. We don't have to start with a finished product. We can get local businesses and interests to contribute buildings to this fairgrounds, and then improve it as time goes by. But there is a way to do it, and I think we're on the right track.
Thank you.
It is nice that they're trying to pull together finally, it is appreciated, too. New fairgrounds, not today. We don't have the money, we have, we don't have the money to do things we need to do. We need to work with the fairgrounds that is already established to be able to keep the cost down. Now, we also have to think outside the box. We can't just keep doing things we've always done. It's obvious that the county can't just carry the load by themselves, the cost is too great. There is a great benefit to our community when it comes to bringing in those tourist dollars into our economy, but that cost still has to be less than what we make on it. Now, the main thing that we need to, to look at is like Oyster Fest, that's a whole different type of situation. If you look at it, they're able to make it profitable. It can be done the same way with the public-private partnership between the county, the ports, and some other local entities. We already had an entity that did it this time, and it was not able to be truly successful. But if it was a combination of, of a public-private partnership, in the style of trying to set up around Oyster Fest, we can make it successful.
Thank you.
I don't want to belabor the point. The, the issue is that we need to move forward with the fairgrounds, we need something that the community can rely on. We know that vendors will come here if they have a stable, reliable fairgrounds, and an established schedule that they can count on, they don't have that now. We are dead in the water as of 2013 unless this committee comes up with something that is workable. I have not said that we need a new fairgrounds, I've said we need a fairgrounds. If we can work it out in the grounds that we have now, great. If we can't do that, for whatever reason, then let's, let's get on board with a new fairgrounds in the area where DPW is and where the plan already exists, and get that started. We need to come together as a community behind this, because the fairgrounds is really an 86-year-old historical part of who we are, and I think we need to maintain it.
Thank you. Denny, we often hear politicians talk about attracting business to our area. Assuming that you would also want to attract businesses and jobs, what specific proposals would you put forward to do that? Your answer should include your vision for land use and for infrastructure.
Well, I think that, thank you, I think that a number of things go into attracting business, and we've heard several of those ideas already expressed here tonight. We'll repeat a couple of them. I think that we need to support those people in the community who want to start a small business. I've been involved in supporting an organization called Washington Cash. Randy knows this very well, has port, supported it as well. It trained 25 people who wanted to start a new business in how to do that, and several of those people have already launched successful businesses. We need to do more of that. We need to make sure, and continue to make sure, that we have good schools in this area so that people who come here to locate a business will find that there's a good school here for their children. We also need to make better use, I believe, of our community college system, and, and provide courses there, two or three additional courses there, that are, that address the needs for the kind of employees that people who wanted to locate a business here would draw on. For example, there could be a certificate program, more often, I understand there has been one or two already, but there could be, through Olympic College here in Shelton, a course on low-impact development that gives people the background they need to help people get through the business of providing low-impact development in, whenever a new building is being constructed. So I think that attracting business has also to do with going out and really going after those people who have a potential to come here. They need to know that we have a great deal to offer in this community, and that we are going to try our best, and certainly I would do this at the county level, to reduce the regulatory burden that people have to go through to create a one-stop shop for business.
Thank you. Randy?
As I said before, I'm a, I'm on the Port of Allen Commission, and our main directive is economic development. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Economic Development Council. We spend a lot of time focusing on bringing businesses in, and we see where there's a lot of the issues that are stopping them from coming in. Some of them may surprise you. For example, the urban growth areas, the place we want them to build so they're not building out over lands that we would like to keep pristine, are pretty much closed for business in certain areas, like up in the Belfair region. We have to be able to open those, those urban growth areas to development if we want to have jobs and companies come here. And they do look to come here, believe it or not. Things are not so bad out there that companies aren't looking to relocate and move. Another problem that we have in Mason County is we do not have enough lands that are opened even down here down the south towards the Shelton area. We don't have five and 10-acre parcels even, according to our latest study through the EDC, that shows that these five and 10-acre parcels have all the things necessary for bringing in businesses, such as the infrastructure, like of course, water, sewer, phone, all the things that are needed to bring businesses in. If we do some rezoning around our urban growth areas out here in Shelton and open it up, if we open up the Belfair UGAs, that'll allow the businesses that are looking to relocate, are looking to come in, a place to go. Another thing that we have to, to do, as, as, as Denny was talking about, he's talking about the cash program, that has been very successful, I'm the one that made a motion on it both times for it to move forward, and it has created jobs. I've also worked with the EDC and partnered up with them through the ports and the Small Business Administration to do a lot of education work for people that want to be entrepreneurs in this area, and even to retain the business that they have, or grow what they have, and allow them to make the profits so they can stay here, because retention is just as important as bringing in new businesses.
Denny?
Randy mentioned the, the urban growth area issue, and I think that's an important thing that we need to keep in mind. The moratorium on development in Belfair had to do with the natural environment there in terms of the business environment, not having a proper water and sewer system and relying on a decaying septic program. Now that's changed, in the core area at least, and so we have businesses that are expressing interest, and we have a new business going to open there soon, and I'm sure that others are going to follow, and they are only going to come there because the services are now available. So I think that those kinds of infrastructure changes have, have been essential, we need to continue to improve those, and we need to make sure that businesses have a welcoming environment when they seek to relocate.
Thank you.
A lot of different classes that I've been fortunate to take because of the port and the EDC, they go through a lot of different issues of what brings businesses to you. And I was always surprised by what the, the second one was, not the top one. The top one is an educated workforce, having the people that'll actually be educated enough to do the job that they're, they're asking them to do. But the second is utilities, and the cost of utilities. Having utilities being too expensive is another thing that keeps businesses out. This is a constant that they have to use in order to, of course, make their books work out. In, for example, the North Mason area, our utilities are way over the top, and we have to do things in order to focus on bringing those utility costs down, so we can also bring businesses that way as well.
Thank you. With that response, you now will have, each have two minutes for your closing statements. However, as you begin your statements, would you please share with us one new idea that you would like to bring with you to the job? Randy, I'd like to hear from you first.
A new idea that I would like to bring to the job is a advisory committee for the citizens for an appeals process in regards to anything and everything that they come against within the county. There's certain times when county employees, in a sense, act like God and think that they have nobody to answer to. Not all of them, there's a lot of great people that work there, but there are a few. I'm also a realtor, I deal with some of that, those issues in different ways. There has to be some type of mechanism, some type of place where the people can come and appeal these type of decisions. At this point, they'd have to try and bring it before the commission, and that's a lot harder to do than you can imagine, because the commission, in those business meetings, don't have the time, each and every time, to take up every appeal. And then on top of that, when the commission doesn't exist, none of them are bosses, for the most part. There is no, no mama or daddy at that time, because there's no executive director. So what it comes down to is, they can make their, their decisions there, but as soon as they leave, that entity doesn't really exist at the moment to go and enforce anything. If we were to create an appeals committee, it'll give people the avenue to at least get their issues across, try and get changed what needs to be changed, but at the same time, have certain regulations interpreted the way they think they should be interpreted, or the way they're even meant to be interpreted, without having to take it to court every time to do it.
Thank you. Denny, your closing statement, as well as one new idea that you would like to bring with you to the job?
Well, again, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I know there's another, another option that you could be participating in. New idea that I really am excited about, and I've been involved in in the last year or so, because I just became aware that it existed at all, is something called STEM, S-T-E-M. A very, and this goes to a whole lot of the kinds of things that are going on in the county. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Education, Engineering, and Math. It's a focus for education. And what I believe is that we should strive in this county to, to create a STEM school that would create an opportunity for young people to advance themselves in those, those scientific areas, so that when an employer comes along who needs, needs special skills, those skills are in the environment. I'm a fire commissioner in District Two, I have been for almost seven years. I have to say that any of you who know District Two know that it's one of the best fire departments in the state. I missed a meeting there tonight where two of our, four of our firefighters who spent time in eastern Washington were going to do a show and tell of their experience and what they learned, and what they bring back to their community. I've spent my entire professional career bringing communities and ideas together. I've done it overseas, and I've done it here. We had a levy failure in District Two, we brought the community together, I facilitated a community meeting, we got our community on board with the fire department, we passed the levy by 70 percent. We did the, I did the same thing in great view. I'm the kind of person who brings communities and ideas together, and I want to be your county commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank both of you gentlemen for joining us tonight. With that, I'll ask Rosalyn and Tim to join me up at the front, we won't be taking a break as to try and keep on track. So again, the starting order has already been determined by random draw, with which Rosalyn will lead off with our first question. So Rosalyn, Mason County is in the process of creating a Skokomish flood hazard management task force. Is this a good idea, and what should the role of this committee, and what sorts of recommendations would you like to see come forward from it?
Well, I haven't been deeply involved in that area. I do know that we do have a flood advisory board down in the Skokomish Valley. I don't know what has been happening there. I know that we do have issues with not being able to clear the river, and we still have constant flooding and those kinds of things. So I would say, yes, we probably do need some involvement from the community, I assume that's what the board will be made up of. So I would definitely encourage that. As far as what the current one does, I think the Corps of Engineers came up with their general study and determined that there just isn't enough money to take care of the people who are in the valley. So what we're going to do about that situation, I'm not sure, but it's of great importance to me.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, thank you for everyone to come tonight. Is this working?
Good, I'm just bringing it a little closer.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Okay, thanks for all, all of you coming today on this, maybe the last debate that we'll have. There's a couple of things going on at the county level. This Skokomish flood district is an established district, which is supervised by the county commissioners. We are the three members of that, of that board, and I've been the chair of that board. There's been a local controversy about the assessment for that, and we have taken a lot of testimony from people at Lake Cushman and other places, because they are the ones that pay into that flood district, while no one who lives, or no lands on the Skokomish Indian Reservation pay at all. And I think that's inequity, because the, the district does do good work. We've spent a lot of money repairing dykes along the Skokomish, or the road up to the church, they call it, the, where the dips are in those places. And I think it's important that we, we really look at the equity of how that is, and we've appointed a new committee to come forward. We have four members so far, and we're just about ready to appoint a couple others. Now, what else is going on in the Skokomish Valley is the Skokomish Watershed Action Team, and I've been a very big supporter of that. It's a multi-jurisdictional group that's worked very hard together to identify some small projects can be, get, that can get done. I don't think we're ever going to dredge the river. That was a conversation we had a long time ago, and that's just not going to happen. But we can do small projects, which bring a lot of great rewards and benefits. And some of those are down at the mouth of the river, where the, the tribe has worked very hard to open up the estuary and take care of the old Nally dykes and get the water to flow, flow better out.
Ross?
Well, I would want to look more closely at what the tribe is doing. When I hear you say they do not pay at all, my guess is that quite a bit of money is spent repairing and restoring and a lot of other things, not necessarily giving money, but still cooperative, and that, I think that's what the area needs, and like I say, I would look at that. But I think that it's a necessary thing, and working together is always my number-one priority.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, taxes is, are always a big issue for everyone in Mason County. And right now, if you live at Lake Cushman, you are paying into the Skokomish flood zone, and your floodwater, the water coming off your property is basically controlled by those two dams up there, by the upper lake and the lower lake. And those citizens, I think rightly feel that they are taking care of the water that comes off their property, and I think we need to reexamine it, the equity of how it's been set up. It's been set up in the, basically in the, in the 70s. And those are the things that I think, as a county commissioner, you need to educate yourself on, talk to the people that are involved, learn the history of the, of the flood district, and also work very hard with the community in trying to find some people that will serve on these committees and give you good advice and come to a conclusion. And I've done that.
Thank you. Tim, as you likely know, the port just voted to relocate the fairgrounds. Do you agree with this decision? And if you don't, what would be your solution?
Well, someone mentioned, Denny, I think, mentioned we had a meeting today with the port commission, and I think that's essential. I have to say, J-HUP has done a terrific job of researching the history of the fairgrounds in here in Mason County. My feeling is that we should let the fairgrounds remain where it is, work with the community, perhaps on a funding source for a new fairgrounds. We have a piece of property identified, the county has done a long study, exhaustive study, in about 2006 and '07, for the property that they own right there at, at Airport Dayton Road and Highway 101 where the Public Works Building is. But I've also contacted Senator Murray's office. I think Senator Murray and her office need to be involved in this discussion, because they are the appropriators. They are the ones that provide the money for the FAA. And I think some of the decisions that have been made are being made by a low-level bureaucrat in Renton, who I have, I've known over the years, I've worked with the FAA and the port on economic development issues since 1986, and have made decisions not based on the community's wishes. And they've made inconsistent decisions. The Centralia Airport much handled, handled much different than, than the airport here at Shelton. So I think we can find some solutions if we get the federal government involved. I think a good example is, we, we heard from the NROTC that they were going to close their program here at Shelton. And what we did as a commission, I did as a legislator, is contact all our congressional people. They, they finally wrote a letter, took them about a month, they researched the issue, and found out that the dates were wrong. They should not have given that edict to the local school here to close that program. I think that's what we'd find in that FAA issue if we get the federal government involved.
Thank you. Rosalyn, your response?
Well, I appreciate that there was a meeting today. I was surprised that that was happening. I think it was a good idea, it's a good start. It's a little late, this has been going on for a long time. The FAA said, "We thought 13 years was long enough." And for this representative of ours to say that we are going to bring in the federal government and get after these people, these low-level bureaucrats, is outrageous, in my opinion. When the meeting was concluding, the solution was to have another meeting and include the feds, and the feds were elected officials. That doesn't make sense to me. Why is the FAA not at the table? And part of that, in my assessment, is that whoever is working with the FAA is not working effectively. And in negotiations or other contracts, or whatever else you're working with, if the person who is your lead spokesperson is not working out, you change them out. So I think we need to be looking at this a little bit differently, and stop trying to get the elected officials to beat up on the local worker bees. I think that there's a solution there, and we have to act- I think that there's a solution there and we have to actually be there and work on it. I mean, 13 years and we're just now getting together.
Tim?
Well, Rosalyn, I know that you've been an FAA employee and you might know the workings, inner workings of the FAA, but as an elected official and someone who has served with Patty Murray in the state legislature, that's served with Maria Cantwell in the state legislature, has known Congressman Dix for a long time, I know that these appropriators are the people that the low-level, lower-level people in the FAA have to listen to. And they want to bring the community together. That's what they told me at their staff level when I talked to Senator Murray's office. Please get us involved to help bring your community together. We want to help. I would not turn down that offer.
It sounds a lot like 47 percent. I don't call those low-level workers. I think the problem is when you're trying to operate a government like a legislature, you get what we have and that's why we have a mess. We need to have the actual governments talking with governments, not elected officials talking with elected officials. This is a local problem and it needs to be done reasonably and intelligently.
Thank you. Rosalyn, I'll have you answer this question first. Lawsuits against the county are especially concerning during tough budget times. Some have called these recent lawsuits frivolous and just a part of doing business while others have said that they could be avoided. What is your opinion and do you have specific ideas when it comes to dealing with these issues?
They can be and will be. What the public needs to do is start electing people who are actually qualified for these jobs. If we have people who have actual experience, when something like this comes up against you, like a union contract, you have something to bounce it against. Right now, we have legislators and they don't know what to do with it. So I bring that to the table. I've got several years of experience with labor relations, human resources, and a variety of other administrative types of things. At the county level, these are administrative jobs and we aren't electing people who have those skills.
Tim?
Well, it's a difficult issue. Rosalyn, I know that you're supported by the unions, have supported your campaign. They've not supported my campaign at all. I think it is because there are 11 different unions at the county. It's very difficult with 11 different bargaining units to come to some agreement. But to get to your question, Heidi, we as county commissioners administer $67 million of a budget and that's with our current expense budget and our public works budget. There are people that sue you. If you ran a $67 million business, you bet you'd be sued. And I can tell you that our state audit was just finished for 2011. There was no exceptions. There were no findings. There were no observations by them that anything was wrong with the way we handled our money. And I can tell you that we also belong to the Washington County's risk pool. We self-insure with 17 other counties. Our recent premium was $226,000 and that rate was a raise of $2,000 from last year. If we had done lots of things wrong, if we had had a lot of lawsuits, lost lawsuits and did egregious things, you bet that your, our premium would have gone up a lot more than 1 percent.
Thank you. Rosalyn?
It would be nice to go back further than one year because I think we've done things wrong for a lot of years. And I think some of those include not giving out information when people have requested it. So anyway, whether that dollar figure means anything or not, I don't know. But the problem is that people don't just get sued. They get sued if they do things wrong. And I've already mentioned before that some of your language that has to do with the unions and how many there are, in my opinion, where I came from, that's borderline unfair labor practice. And that's exactly what I'm talking about, is that we don't know how much longer this will go on. If we keep putting a person like that in this position, we are going to keep paying more.
Tim, your final word?
Well, I guess I have on this question?
Yes, sorry.
Well, I really have difficulty, difficulty thinking that if I told the public that there are 12, 11 or 12 different bargaining units that we deal with as county commissioners, that somehow an unfair label labor practice or somehow borderline illegal as you're charging, you have to be specific. It is a, it is a difficult job to manage the dollars that we have. And people always want something more. That's the world that we live in. I've negotiated with unions at the state level for a long time as well. It's a difficult world. You come to some agreement and I think the package that we have for our employees is outstanding.
Thank you. With that, you will now have two minutes for your closing statements. Like the candidates for District One, as you begin, would you please share with us one new idea that you have that you would like to bring to the job? And we'll start with you, Tim.
Well, I think a new idea, we didn't talk about law enforcement today and that's a very prominent subject on everybody's mind. Our rate of residential burglary is extremely high. We have limited funds for our sheriff's office. We've done a lot to provide them a new office. We've increased the funding for the sheriff's office 24 percent in the last eight years. A new idea I would see that the county commissioners could help the legislature lobby for and myself lobby for is use a portion of the lodging tax for law enforcement. We double our, the population of our community during the summer and the Fourth of July Oyster Fest and those times. We need special overtime. We could use some of that. But in closing, I want to say this, you know, this is the only race where there's two Democrats and with our top two primary system. It is very interesting to me that we are very different Democrats. I'm a conservative individual. I believe that I am a public servant. I believe that my opponent is a party servant. She has been the former chair of the Democratic Party and I don't believe that the Democrats or the Republicans have a monopoly on all the good ideas. We have to work together. If, I'm ostracized by the party because I am different. I like Rob McKenna. I served in legislature. I think he's, make a great governor. I served with Jay Inslee. I don't think he would do as well. So I'm a ticket splitter and I think that you have to, an intelligent person picks, chooses, listens, and learns from their experience. And I, obviously, I've not been the party favorite, but I think the conservatives, the Republicans and the conservative middle will decide this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalyn, two minutes for your closing statement. And if you would also begin with sharing one new idea that you would like to bring to the job?
The new idea first or?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, it's not really a new idea. It's just an idea that needs to be implemented. I sat through the budget workshops, hearings, whatever they're called, today and I was not pleased. I think we should have something that's more of a program review that includes the budget discussions and also includes the committees and boards that are affected by those budgets or are somehow impacted by them. So that's something that I would like to see differently. As far as this position, I think we do need to hire someone who is qualified. The idea that our current commissioners spend something in the neighborhood of four hours a week and get with benefits about $106,000 a year is outrageous and I think it needs to stop. We do need to have commissioners who are actually there doing the job. Just recently, we've had more of that. There's a flurry of activity, not necessarily action, but that's usually what happens when people are about to be fired. They start getting pretty busy. But anyway, back to the 24 percent, I've heard that said over and over again about the sheriff's budget and in my checking, when you want me to be specific, you voted against those increases three out of four times. So I'm not sure why you're even using that figure. And as far as, we're both Democrats, we can probably dispense with saying we're exactly the same, only different because we're not. I would not consider you to be a Republican and that's probably why the party does not accept you. So I think we're done with that story. Please vote for me. I'm Rosalyn Reed. I'm the one that's qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will ask the county commissioner candidates for District Three, Ross Gallagher and Terry Jeffries, to join me up at the podium. Thank you, Rosalyn and Tim, for joining us tonight. Ross, you'll be the first one to field this question. Mason County has had a stormwater task force in place for some time, looking at options for funding a clean water program. What do you hope will be the outcome of this effort and do you believe that the county needs additional staff devoted to compliance?
Well, I was part of, I was part of the original grant when I was commissioner. It's in its last year. The lady, Jane, I believe, I can't remember the last name now, but she'd been working very hard on this. One of the previous debates, I mentioned about the setbacks and one reason is because of septic systems. People need to build away from the water. Another is docks. People don't realize, but docks have, you know, for the sun and the depth. And so county sometimes looks at the depth, I'll get it right, the docks and it creates some problems for marine life on that. But it's coming, this whole process is coming to a head and I'm not sure exact date of when this is going to happen.
Thank you. Terry?
I've spent a lot of time trying to understand this issue and where we are with this and so what's happened, where we are now is that the task force has forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners and they're recommending $1.4 million to be spent on stormwater abatement and to basically clean the filters and to do pollution identification control programs and public education. This is a significant amount over what we're currently spending out of our public works budget of about $600,000. The other option is if, now this $1.4 million, I think, is being recommended that it be a vote of the people or at least a charge to each property owner for stormwater coverage. The other option, should this not go to the people's vote or a commission councilmatic increase, is that we would just continue with a $685,000 program. Our shellfish industry is concerned that if we don't keep a heavy, heavy effort on keeping our stormwater programs moving and effective, that we'll see our water qualities go down and then we'll start addressing the stormwater and it'll get better and then it'll go down. And they're looking for some stability there because obviously our water quality has a lot to do with the effectiveness and the ability for our shellfish industries to be productive and successful. So the outcome, I think, I'm predicting that the current county commission will allow the new commissioners to take up this issue and decide whether or not there will be a tax or a levy on each of the parcels and will it need additional staff? The partnership that's going on right now with the, I'm stopping, I don't think it will need more staff.
Thank you. Ross?
Well, my opponent mentioned stormwater. What people don't realize, our highway system is probably the biggest polluter of stormwater and DOT sometimes overlooks this fact. The shellfish industry is a very viable industry in this county. As previously mentioned by the legislative candidates, like the pulp paper mill created a lot of bad things for the county. Right now, Oakland Bay is almost eatable, swimable in all areas, but we have to keep move forward and look for other options.
Thank you. Terry, one more minute?
Yes, it is true and we've heard a lot about the fact that the state highways contribute a lot to our stormwater problems and the state legislature has tried to address that by having a payback program. If a county were to charge itself for its own stormwater contribution for these county roads, then you can charge the state. Was talking with Loretta Swanson, who does run the stormwater task force and our stormwater efforts in Public Works and she's recommending to the county commissioners that it's not worth the effort and we could probably get more done through a voluntary partnership with the state. It is true, the state needs to come to the table, probably in a more significant manner than they've done, but I do applaud the legislature for at least making the work to have them be somewhat accountable for their stormwater. I think that's all I need to say. Well, no, I did want to say a little bit more about the staffing. I didn't get to finish that one. So I think another thing that the sitting commissioners that have done that's been pretty impressive is the partnership, I just lost it, partnership with the Swanson Tribe on the pollution control.
Thank you. So Terry, we often hear politicians talk about attracting business to our area. Assuming that you also want to attract business and jobs, what specific proposals would you put forward to do that? Your answer should include your vision for land use and for infrastructure.
And I appreciate the fact that the question does identify and understand that land use and infrastructure is essential to attracting businesses and any kind of economic activity because underneath it all is the land. Is that land buildable? Is there permission to build? I love that term. Is there permission to even build on that land? That has to do with your zoning laws. Are our zoning laws up to speed? We have, we spent the first, in my time on the planning commission, was kind of the first crack at our zoning designations and the permitted uses and we handed up with the matrix of allowed uses in various zoning areas, or zoning designations. I think that's too prescriptive. I'll admit, I made a mistake. That was way too prescriptive. I think we need to be more performance measures or have performance-based designations of our zoning areas and even in our development codes and make sure that we are ready to invite and partner with somebody that needs the land to be zoned and correctly. Have the infrastructure in place in the areas we want to have commercial development and fund it through growth-related revenues, real estate excise tax, sales tax on construction. Go ahead and grab that sales tax on construction and put it aside and dedicate it to infrastructure development as well as the property tax that is charged on new construction. Those are ways to fund it. I think that we can have a more service culture in our, in our community development, our permitting department. I think they do a pretty good job, but I would like to have a real service culture developed where we are there as partners first and regulators second. And once you, once a business identifies and understands that this is a place that wants us here and is ready for us, that will attack the businesses.
Thank you. Ross?
Omitting a sales tax isn't good. Several projects have kept this county afloat, naming, did I do that? But I like the Belfer Sewer Project, sales taxes on that. Also, the recent PUD building, which is like a $46 million project and the county benefited from that. But also, we have excellent infrastructure. Johns Prairie has rail service. Not a lot of communities have that anymore and it's being maintained for good use. But a while back, we had a company that was very vital to this community and union and they became international, Gerbing heated gloves. And Gerbing wanted to expand, but the poor Shelton didn't have adequate services for them, so they moved to Tumwater. And now I believe they're in North Carolina. But that was a good business. We could have used it and employed local people. When I was growing up in the, okay. When I was growing up in the 60s, I came to work at Simpson and I just walked off the street. "Okay, you're good enough. You're going to be on the Simpson crew." And those days were, we need people who are radically educated. Simpson today wouldn't even consider hiring anybody without a high school education. When I worked, three people, it couldn't, and now we need people that are highly educated to do the jobs of the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to clarify, sales tax, taking sales tax on construction and dedicating it to infrastructure development is, I think, a very good idea. Yes, the county depends on sales tax on government-related construction jobs. It's a great little bit of money, pot of money to have, but you cannot depend on sales tax on construction for your ongoing programs all the time. The business cycles, the dips and uphills of the housing market, and, you know, how often are you doing these public works building constructions or having Highway Three widened? That isn't often enough for you to start depending on that kind of money for ongoing programs. And that's why I think it's important to set that aside for your one-time costs of infrastructure development. Thank you.
Do I get one?
You have the next question. So, Ross?
I thought it ended with rebuttal, then you get the next question.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. You're right.
Gotcha. All right. Oh, yeah. No. When things went south on this county, we were anticipating a growth of 8 percent sales tax. Thurston County was anticipating, in their budget, 15 percent. And since in the '09 and '10 budgets, we planned for zero growth in sales tax. And if these other projects come along, so be it. We can use that extra money. But we're counting just plans for zero growth. From right now, in our sales tax, we're ahead of the game as an estimated, and I thought I got the red one, but, but you can't rely, you know, "Oh, we've got this big project." You know, that's pretty good, but that's it.
So with that, Ross, you get this next question. Lawsuits against the county are especially concerning due to tough budget times. Some have called recent lawsuits frivolous and just part of business doing, or doing business, while others have said they could be avoided. What is your opinion, and do you have specific ideas when it comes to dealing with these?
Well, I was kind of on the ground level of one of them, and I had no part, you know, in the initiation of that. But also, I was, when I was a commissioner, we got sued on public records to the tune of close to $400,000. But the county rate, when you're at the risk pool, you have a deductible, and actually, in reality, it costs, each of those cases was $10,000 each, even though people are paid on that. And with the sewer one, that burden is on the sewer. I thought originally it was, the risk pool covered it, but it didn't. And the county tried to work with Mr. Johnson numerous times, and it just became, when I was out of office by then, and it just kept progressing and progressing on that. But, and the other one about the garbage, there was some question about if it was a closed meeting or not, and I wasn't there. But contracts, you know, need to be bidded, but also, if you know if a contract's going to be due, and your department head all of a sudden says, "Oh, yeah, we're supposed to have done this three months ago," you know, that's what appeared to me what happened with the garbage one.
Teri?
Okay, so the question is, could they have been avoided? Of course, yes, they could have. So what do we do from here? You learn from the mistakes, and you move forward. And I think that, in particular, the issue around the unfair labor practice charge, I think I was taught about a model that the state uses, the OFM department uses, where you take, okay, yes, we do have 12 unions, and that does make it very difficult to negotiate fair contracts for all of them across the board, especially when the first one in might get a little less than the next last one out. It had been suggested, and I think this is a really good idea to look into, is to have the economic portion of all these contracts be negotiated together, and apparently, the state does this, because they have multiple unions as well as state workers. And then the workplace conditions and those sorts of things could be negotiated individually. I think that also would help even out some of the issues. I had some of the union members of one of the unions say, you know, "We kind of take what we think we negotiated was fair, and then another union comes in, and they get a lot more, and then we feel a bit bad about that." I think that would help kind of create a more collegial atmosphere among the employees, make a lot predictable for the county commission and the budgeting process, and hopefully make it a little bit easier. It was also suggested that maybe we do it also the state does and have our union contracts negotiated by a third party that's hired on behalf of the commissioners. So that the human resources department isn't, is more involved in workplace safety, the health and benefit issues, and the hiring and the firing, and have that awesome responsibility of union contracts be put on a professional who does this for a living. I think that's probably one thing to look at, and I'd like to study more in depth.
Ross?
Well, it's true. We have a number of bargaining unit people. And I also would like to see, you know, a uniform health allotment. The people in the jail actually, now the other outfits, you know, bargaining union want, but the benefits of that, too. And, but we just need, I have, we're real good faith in the RHR department. They're in the process, I believe, in the next few days of interviewing an actual director. The director they have right now is interim. And a while back, I was responsible for hiring Karen Jackson, and I felt very good with her, and, but unfortunately, she decided to move. So.
Thank you. Teri?
And then I also wanted to talk a little bit about the, just the in general, about the lawsuits. And I studied them, because I do believe that you can learn from your mistakes. And I studied what happened, you know, how did we get to where we're going? And obviously, it depends on the kind of information, who you're talking to, and the public records that you're given. But what I noted, the common theme was just not always paying attention to the fine details of issues, and there's a lot coming at you. And so, lesson learned for me personally, if you vote for me and if I'm hired to be your commissioner, is to spend the hours and hours and hours in paying attention to the detail and talking to everybody involved. And just frankly, you know, be there, show up and be there for some of these things. Again, I don't want to cast aspersions on the sitting commission, or, but I think that some diligence can happen, and we learned some lessons.
Thank you. That concludes the question portion. Like the other candidates, you'll each have two minutes for your closing statements. Again, as you begin, please share with us one new idea that you would like to bring with you to the job. Teri, if we can hear from you first?
Okay. I would like to, I also have been trying to participate as much as I can in the budget process, and I really want to revamp that whole entire process. I was asked at a previous forum, what would be a sign of success in your first year? And my response was that our budget hearings were with people that knew exactly where in the budget they think there ought to be some changes, some things that could be done differently, because the budget's transparent, the process is transparent, they have a clear understanding of what the role of county government is, what they're mandated to do by the feds, and what kind of nice-to-haves are some of the things that we, because the unique our county. I think that our budget planning processes and how we decide how, should also be tied to performance measures. And so we could have our budget hearing and workshop time also be a report card time. Okay, we gave ourselves the goal to lower our property crime rate by 5 percent, and we increased the number of deputies by three. Did we make our goal? Did we get our return on investment on that? How'd we do? If we didn't, why, maybe what happened that made us not hit the mark? You know, was there, whatever, you know, whatever the social climate might have been, or whatever the extraneous reasons that you can't meet that mark. I'd really like to see that happen, because I think that the voters really want to know what's going on. I constantly get asked as I'm doorbelling, "What does county government do?" You know, and I go through the list and everything. I would love all of you to be totally clear in your minds, this is the role of your county, these are the services I should expect from them, this is probably how many employees it would take to get there, and boy, we could do a lot better over here, here, and here if we put some of this money over in that bucket and put that money over in that bucket. Oh, guess what? You can't do it, because it's designated by the legislative authority. And just be really understanding what we are here for.
Ross, your two-minute closing, as well as a new idea that you'd like to bring with you to the job?
Well, actually, I have three. One is, people want to talk about governments coming together, meeting together. And so the problem is, when do you get governments actually meet together? And I'd like to follow the example of Thurston County. They have a fifth Wednesday meeting. All the governments really don't have meetings on Wednesday. So the county, the ports, and I want school boards, the city, maybe fire districts, too, but we all get together four times a year. And also, what are our common goals? What do we need to do? Another one is advisory ballot for the fairgrounds. It can happen, and I believe we could get it on the, one of the school day levies, and, or maybe it won't be till the general election. The other is no time limit on public input. The county right now has 15 minutes. Five people, you know, you have five minutes per person. And today, at the camp commission meeting, nobody wanted to talk. So that was kind of rare. But I think if we initiated that policy, then, yeah, there'd be some people abuse it at first, and then people have the courtesy for other people on that. But also, in closing, I want to remind everybody, I've been an elected official for 15 years. My opponent has no elected experience. I have no special interests, and my brochure right here says no special interest. However, the real estate community is spending thousands of dollars for my opponent to sit at the county commission. And with me, there's no learning curve. I'm ready to serve on November 27th. And she talks about doorbelling. Well, I doorbell. I doorbell over 3, 3,300 houses. And that's it.
I'd like to thank both Teri and Ross for joining us tonight, as well as, as well as the other candidates. And thank everybody for spending your evening with us and learning a little bit more about your candidates. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for cosponsoring tonight, Mason County Web TV for live streaming. And I'd also like to thank two of my Governmental Affairs Committee members, Sam Sevier and Patty Case, who are with us here tonight, too. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.[1778.87][1778.87](applause)